All right, everybody. Thanks for joining us. Prior to our council meeting officially beginning, we do have an invocation this evening. Pastor Pergy is here from Fellowship Baptist. I invite you up.
Okay, thank you. Let's pray together.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the beautiful day today. We're thankful for your many mercies that come to us because of the Savior who died and lives again. Father, thank you that forgiveness and salvation is found only in Him. Tonight, as this meeting convenes, we do pray that you would give supernatural wisdom. We pray that we remember the two great commandments, the first, to love the Lord our God, and then the second, to love our neighbor as ourselves. In particular, thank you for the results of discussions, and I pray that you'll guide superintend for your glory. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Mason, would you mind turning that mic on before we get started? The public come on. Yep. All right. With that, I'm going to call to order our Tuesday, August 20th, common council meeting. Megan, will you please take the role? Davis?
Here.
Lampy?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Barts?
Here.
Blanke?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Mildenhauer?
Here.
Very good. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from August 6th. Comments or questions? Mr. Barts?
Yes, under the licenses section, the second paragraph, temporary premises amendment, application by care pue. It does have me on there as a second. It doesn't have the person that specified or made the motion to approve.
We'll take a peek on that one. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on those minutes? All right. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Online, it looks like it's just our city team, so I'll go to you, Megan.
Kathy Riedel and Barrett Slalk? Slalk?
Do I have to introduce myself?
Please do, ma'am.
Okay.
Preferably as the beacon of light from the police department.
I am forever and always the beacon of light. I'm Kathy Riedel. I work for the police department. With me tonight is my son, Barrett. We have been working for about a year, year and a half, on the committee for this inclusive, I don't want to call it a park because it's already an existing park. The play place, the rec area, that is coming to the council tonight, hopefully for approval, to move forth with the fundraising, to take place in the location where the volleyball court playground used to be in the Riverside Park area. I don't know if anybody is familiar with that area, but that play place was very dilapidated and started falling apart, and the city had to tear that down. So this inclusive area that we've been on the committee for, for quite some time, is for our underrepresented population, special needs, handicap, other disabilities. The reason why I was so involved in it is because my son Barrett has autism. He's level one or high functioning. They kind of change how they diagnose things. And had this been a reality when he was younger, it would have been an absolute game changer for me. Going to parks in the city was a very stressful event. It's not something I did with him because he was a runner, and it just wasn't safe. There was only two parks in the city that I could go to with him, Mary Rose and Arlington, and that was only because the playgrounds were set back far enough that, one, he ran, not when, or when, it was not if, it was when, I would be able to catch him before he ran into the road. So those, our parks were very limited for me with a special needs child that was a runner. Riverside Park was not a place that I went to because of the proximity to the river. Chamberlain was very easy to lose him in. So this design, conceptual design, is just phenomenal. When it was presented to us, I had tears in my eyes because I think of the families that would be positively impacted by this in our city and how it would have changed things for me when he was younger. It just, it would have been incredible. So I'm hoping that we have the support to move forward with that. Would you like to say anything, Barrett?
Thank you.
He's a little tired.
Thank you, Barrett. Thank you, Officer Riedel, or Detective Riedel. That's his choice. Eric Schmidt?
Eric Schmidt, 605 Lafayette Street, 53094. Speaking to address a rumor that I got caught wind of, it's going around the public, and my name is being used. I have not now, in public or privately endorsed anybody who is currently campaigning for mayor, and to hear otherwise is a flat lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Feldman?
Good evening. Robert Feldman, 1300 Newcastle Court. Here to talk about the Atwater, Atwater Street development. My property sits on the cul-de-sac with the 20-acre parcel directly behind my house. I will have the privilege of having at least three of those condo or row houses right behind my backyard. As I said, it's 30 feet, five feet to the edge of that property line. Not sure what the design is on those homes and if they're going to be multifamily or what they are. I do not endorse that property development. I'm wondering about the TID district and its effect on the city's budget. I'm also wondering what the 60-acre TID district will encompass, and will that have any impacts on existing buildings or facilities that already exist there? I feel that a TID district was originally set up for the start or development of commercial properties for industry and not for residential. I'm concerned about the precedents this will set in the city. Are other developers going to be looking for TIF money, such as the proposed developments along the riverfront where the old Johnson's facility was? Are they going to be looking for TIF district, some type of funding as well? I'm not in favor of the mass or, what's the right term, the concentrated homes or housing apartments in the area. We have a very nice existing subdivision there, and the further development into that field of single-family residents seems to be like the logical choice. So, I guess one other comment is, I'm wondering why we have four to six-foot tall weeds in that parcel of land when I think there's an audience for eight inches or so. It's supposed to be maintained, which would have been surpassed by the third week of May. So I'm wondering why that hasn't been taken care of as well this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Callis?
Hi, I live on Douglas Avenue. I just rise tonight to speak against rezoning of that Elwood property. To me, I don't have any vested interest in it, but it just seems to me like it's the wrong thing to do. If you're looking for a quick fix, put up apartments, get a lot of people in maybe, but if you really want to grow the city, I think it's real important to keep that a single family. And I encourage you to vote that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Fritz?
I'm Elizabeth Fritz, and I live on North Maple Street, District 3. And I'm here to speak up in favor of the development because I have recently been talking with a lot of people here in Watertown and have heard from quite a few people that we simply do not have enough housing. We do not have enough single-family housing, but we also don't have enough multifamily housing. We don't have enough housing at all levels of socioeconomic strata. So I am strongly in favor and hope that you will vote in favor of any and all housing developments that we can support in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Hoffman?
Hi, Lori Hoffman, 1009 North Second Street, Watertown. I'm here to talk about item 12, the three variances to our comprehensive zoning plan. I'm concerned that the public is really not understanding how three or more developments using a TID district plan is going to impact our services. And I would like to ask, ask you to table the vote on the ordinances 12, A, B, and C until your next meeting, where I would ask that you have a discussion about how this is going to impact the services for the rest of the city. I don't live in that area. In fact, I don't even have a horse in that race. I live in the central city, and nobody can possibly change that social contract with the voting because there's no room. But that's, that's another concern of mine, that you, you have this comprehensive zoning plan, and you're breaking that social contract with the people that bought houses there. And I also think that we should, this warrants more discussion. And I believe each and every one of you are doing the best thing that you think that you should do, and even though you disagree. But I think that we need a discussion as the public to really have confidence that your decision to, to do this or not do this is something that we understand how you got through it. There was a time when, in this, when this city was very often accused of backroom deals. And I know that's not the case anymore. This is, none of you participate in that. But I don't ever want to see the perception of that again. And I'd like more discussion on this, and I think that would help everyone feel confident that, that you guys are making an excellent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hoppenrath?
Mike Hoppenrath, 1302 Newcastle Court. At our last meeting, a question was asked, and I'm going to paraphrase question and answer, I apologize for that, but the question was, if we rezone this and approve it now, is it for a certain developer? And the answer of the city attorney was, no, it's not a specific developer, but right after that, a specific developer was asked to come up and ask questions of storm water and cost. And I found that very curious. But be that as it may, there was one other issue that was brought up, and I don't remember who said it, but they said this area already has multifamily, south by the hospital, south on Alward Street, west on Juneau Street, and north on North Forest Street. So if this is implemented here, we will become the multifamily district in Watertown, which I don't think is right. So I'm still opposed to 24, 17, and 18. I thank you for your time over the past several months. I know it's not easy, but thank you.
Thank you. Corey Kreiser?
Good evening. Corey Kreiser, applicant from Heartland Shores. We ask that you consider the comprehensive plan revision and zoning change for basically two reasons. One is the market has shown that the current zoning doesn't provide enough density for development. And then two, that the existing neighborhood already contains a mixture of single and multifamily housing. So just to elaborate a little bit, you know, obviously this parcel was not built out with the existing multi, existing single family to the east during the current development. Over the last several years, which included a housing boom in this country, there was no single-family development on the site despite it occurring elsewhere in town. And I think that shows that the market won't support a infrastructure-intensive zoning that only allows four units per acre at the site. Additionally, we just think it's an acknowledgement that the composition of this neighborhood is, is already multifamily and single-family. It was great to see all of the community feedback and the passion the neighborhoods, neighbors have for their neighborhood. We agree that it's a desirable place to live, and that's why we're interested in it as well. But the reality is, there is multifamily in here, and rezoning this parcel to a use that would allow multifamily or single-family could be a good buffer and could preserve the existing composition of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting as well. And then with that, let's move on to our public hearing for this evening. This is a public hearing to vacate and discontinue a portion of Jones Street. I'll open that public hearing. If anyone would like to comment, you can go to the microphone by Alder Person Davis. Or anyone remote? All right, we'll close that public hearing. And then let's move to reports. You all have the finance minutes from, finance minutes, the finance committee minutes from July 22nd, and public safety from August 7th. Any comments or questions from anyone on those? All right. Then let's move to communications and recommendations. Our first item for this evening is an inclusive recreational area update. And I am the one that's going to be providing a bit of an update on that on behalf of our stakeholder group. There's some stakeholders sitting in this room that have been really instrumental. If you wouldn't mind just shooting your hand up in the air, I know there's a couple of you here that have been a part of it, obviously Kathy and Barrett as well. We had a wonderful group of folks that have worked for about a year and a half through the blessing of the Park Recreation and Forestry Commission to, and the finance committee to receive a grant for the design of a fully-inclusive recreational area at Riverside Park. What we're doing tonight is just an update to you all because we are going to start the, well, assuming an approval on Monday from the finance committee on the actual ability to receive the money. We will begin our formal fundraising. And so I wanted you all to be in the know prior to that phase beginning. So what you're looking at is our city website. This is a hidden page at the time being. Come tomorrow, this will be a page that's available for, for you to point people to. I'm going to show this video. It's just, it's just about a minute or so. And then just pop back through some of these websites. You can take a peek at those, show you a couple of renderings, and answer any questions that you all may have. So about five minutes of time here. I tested this earlier, but we shall see. So prior to hopping over to our website, I'm going to just shuffle through a couple of pictures to explain really briefly the site layout to you all. So as you heard from Officer Riedel, we are looking at reusing the playground space at the Riverside Park volleyball court. So to give you some kind of positional awareness, over here on the right where my cursor is are the garden homes at the Marquardt. Here is the bathroom and the volleyball courts, and then of course, Fourth Street here. What you're looking at is the site layout. The video showed you predominantly this area that I'm circling here. The remaining pieces that I wanted to show is this walking path. So this is about a third of a mile walking path that goes through the existing Riverside Park volleyball court area. Christine Buttrus, who is on remotely, of course, is on our stakeholder group, and so she's fully aware and has been a part of this design very carefully as well. We do lose two volleyball courts in this redesign, but she is confident with the size of our leagues, that that is something that is doable. When I first got this job, I started doing mayor meetups, and something I heard quite a bit every time I go to the Marquardt was that the residents there, and I know others throughout the community as well, look for a safe place to walk that is close to restrooms and has some seating along the way. And so this third of a mile walking loop was designed with that request in mind. I want to just provide a couple of aerial views. So the first change you'll see is parking right on site. The overarching goal of this project is to have a space that is fully inclusive. You're going to find spaces that are partially inclusive. In the city of Watertown, you'll find an inclusive element at a park. Most of the time, it's a swing. But this space in our area is the only one that we're aware of that is fully inclusive, meaning you can pull up to one of these parking spaces and maneuver throughout the entirety of the park, into the restrooms, onto the surfaces, onto the paved and poured surfaces. So you're looking at a couple of different areas, traditional park, you know, infant and toddler, two to five, six and up. And then in the woods, I'm going to show you is another space, and that is our sensory-friendly area that was very carefully designed. Here is just a closer view. Why I love this one is, is it gives you an idea of this centralized walking path, and then it also has a little image of our foot bridges. Those should look reminiscent of the foot bridges in Riverside Park. On the website, you'll see much closer photos. I realized I could talk about this for hours, and I don't want to be that person, so I selected a couple of photos. But I do like to point out that we were intentional with that design to make sure that it fit, but that it also was reminiscent of the past. So what you're seeing on this photo is just more of a level view, as though you're standing, looking to the north. You'll see a lot of inclusive elements, such as the ship that goes back and forth. And then, I didn't know it, so perhaps someone in this room doesn't either, where you see kind of these bubbles of elevation, look for those in the video. Those are areas where there's topography built in to the space, if you will, for ease of play, some are for ease of transfer from an assistive device. This is a really good view of that. You'll see, these are ramped areas that have accessibility to this boat. The going in position on the playground was that we wanted to have a play space where kids of all abilities could be, and so we have designed a space that includes that. Here is just a photo of the next level age group. The slides get a little higher. That's, that's pretty much it. I think before I was in this role, I didn't even realize that there were different sizes or for different ages, but higher, higher play features equate to those higher ages. This photo is of that, that sensory-friendly area that's in the woods, right on the north of our park space. This was intentionally designed to have just quieter features. The whole space is kind of themed after an enchanted woods. So you're going to find features of that, those types of elements, whether it's the mushrooms, or I'm going to show you an ogre in just a moment. This space really is just designed to ensure that we can have some quieter spaces to meet the needs of, of everyone in our community. This is another look. The Ogre Bridge is what takes you into this quiet space. And I think I grabbed a photo of the Ogre Bridge from the other side. So this was a feature that was designed specifically for us. The video I just showed you was provided by the company that is listed down here below. And then we use Parkitecture as our park design firm, and that's who was hired by a grant from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation to provide us the schematic design. So on our website, what you will find are some frequently asked questions, and then we also have a timeline. On the timeline page, it steps through our ambitious timeline of a goal of having a contract signed in the spring and construction to start closely thereafter, and it could very riskically, realistically complete by the fall. So we have the timeline, and then there are also ways to donate. We have members of our committee that have worked with the Watertown Community Foundation. They've been a wonderful partner for this community and are again partnering with us for this project, so folks can work through them for a variety of different donation opportunities. And then it also provides some information on where people can donate. And then the last is just a nice web representation of a variety of renderings. So I obviously didn't go through each of these, but the one thing that I, that I will point out, because Barrett's in the room and Kathy alluded to it, is the fencing that's around the entirety of this project. Well, I should say, around the vast majority of the play space. It's not around the entire recreational area. And those items do, of course, come at a cost. You know, fencing is estimated at around $40,000. I'll do the math for you all. It's about 1.7 million. The goal is to, and really the expectation, is to build this with all grants and donations. So we, I am deep into the budget. I am tasked with cutting about $2 million from our, our capital fund. I know perhaps better than most how, the circumstances of our fiscal position. And so I wasn't interested in having this project come forward that would make it more difficult to have that fiscal story be in a, in a good position at the end of this budget cycle. So from the get-go, the goal was all grants and donations to make this happen, and I feel really confident in that, and so does our entire fundraising group. We have a nice fundraising schedule that we will be embarking on from August to December. The members on our team are, some of which are sitting in this room, some that aren't, will join us in making those asks to, to different folks in the community, different nonprofits throughout the state, some throughout the country. My ask to you all is, if you know of someone who, or you know of an organization that this is their cause, please reach out to me. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to tell the story about why this space is so important to us here in Watertown. Kathy hit on a personal reason, but I, I'll just share, you know, for, we all have a personal reason, I think, that we stepped into this. But as, as my official position as mayor, you know, to have a, a community where families, strangers, anyone can align and be together, we've heard time and time again, the research around social connectedness and the importance of that for community health and just the trickle-down impacts that that can have. And also, being that we would be the only one within the area that's fully inclusive, it's also an opportunity for tourism. It's the potentiality. We heard from folks on our committee, I would have moved there if I had something like this when my children were young, or when I first started being a caretaker for my granddaughter or whatever it may be. So we have been deeply inspired by the lived experiences that have helped really inform the design, and just a really diverse group of stakeholders. I'll, I'll just give you one story. We were selecting what type of, this is a story I always tell, I'm not just telling it because Barrett's here, but we were selecting the type of turf to, to mock up in this design. And Blake, our architect, passed it around, and, "Oh yeah, you know, it feels great to me," you know, like, pass, pass, pass. And then it gets to Barrett, and he's like, "No, absolutely not. It, it feels like needles on my arm." And because of Barrett's form of autism, that is something that impacts him deeply, and that, that experience alone was something that just made me realize the importance of us as a community being a leader and ensuring that we're meeting the needs of the people that live here in all facets of the services that we provide. So grateful that we got a 16-year-old to hang out with us. I don't know that we would have had many of those. And just really fortunate to be able to finally be in this position where we can share this plan with you all. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. Otherwise, I just want to make sure you all were in the know. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
Just one, I'll keep it brief. The rendering only shows a handful of park spaces that are gonna be, what appear to be van-accessible. How many are you targeting to be fully van-accessible that are gonna be on the park side of the road?
Sure. So I do not know how many parking spaces. Christine, if you do, please jump in. I don't know how many exist in the current parking lot.
I mean, if we're gonna be redesigning the whole thing prospectively...
We're redesigning just that front space, so that would have the handful or so that were in the rendering. I do not know the current amount that may be in what this is, a parking lot over to the east.
Is there an ask that is on a list that people want as part of this planning committee?
This was, the section I'm circling the screen, this was an ask. But I have not heard a request for more. But listen, last night, we presented a Park and Rec, and someone reminded me that we needed to add a certain component, so the feedback is great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions from anybody, or from anyone on our team? Okay. Well, thank you all.
You have one.
Sure.
You talked about some of the materials. I don't know what the rest of them are, but what about the maintenance of this once it's constructed?
Yeah, so we had this question last night at Park and Rec, and obviously, we're gonna get a certain amount of lifespan with this type of equipment. And I think what I'm encouraging us to consider is that having poured surfaces should be the expectation. The days of having wood chips, which aren't maneuverable by many in the population, really shouldn't be our standard. So for me, it's planned maintenance that goes into the mechanisms that we've now produced, our five-year capital planning process. The surface will be the first thing that we'll start to need repairs. We know that because we have it at Riverside Park, and we do repairs there. So the short answer to your question is, at this point anyway, unless we fundraise just wonderfully, far exceeding our expectations, like we did with the square, I mean, we set a future fund for the square, the expectation would be that, as a city, we acknowledge the need to have appropriate surfaces for maneuverability. The equipment itself, I mean, those are things we already have, you know, we don't have anything this new, perhaps, or specialized. But to have one space in the community that has it, I think, I feel confident saying that the stakeholder group felt that that should be an expectation that we should maintain. Yes, ma'am?
In addition to that, that space is already being maintained by the Park Department, and this actually will take away some of that free space that they have to evolve, because everything within the play space would not have to be moved or trimmed or cut. So theoretically, when this was in our discussion, there's actually less maintenance on behalf of the Parks Department in that day-to-day operation.
Right. Thank you for pointing that out.
And Mr. Callis, I only called on her because she's on the stakeholder group, but I'm happy to answer your questions, in particular, at the end of the meeting, if that's okay. Thank you. Anyone else up here? Yes, sir?
As you know, I'm a big supporter of this. We've seen this back and forth, the Park and Rec, since January, I think, when we first presented this. For the benefit of the council, can you kind of talk through in terms of which parts of these are going to be essentially bid and let through the city, and how the funding is going to work?
Sure. So if I flip back to this timeline page, and it should be in your memo as well, you'll see that we spend the better part of two months working through the city meeting and approvals, and the month prior to that, working through the construction bidding. So this will be bid like any other public works project. Mark has set up a particular line item account where these donations would go into. That's the only account that would pay them. And then we'll bid through the project. It would have to meet the requirements, get approved by Park and Rec, and be within budget. Thanks for that question.
So do we have the ability, I assume, to give a donor a receipt that provides them some form of tax deduction?
That's where the Watertown Foundation is helped through this process. We don't have any development department here, but the Foundation would help in that fashion.
But the money's gonna go through the city, not the Foundation?
If people choose to donate to the city, you can provide a receipt of a nonprofit donation, like you or I would get at, like, when we drop off stuff at St. Vincent de Paul or something. But if you're looking to use, and I am not gonna pretend for two seconds, like I know the ins and outs of donating your stocks and bonds for the purposes of funding projects, but I do know Mr., there's people in the room that may know, and Mr. Cons has been the one that's been most helpful to us. So Brian Cons is, of course, the chair of the Park and Rec Committee, and he has had conversations with the Community Foundation to make sure that we can use them as a vehicle for that type of necessary receipting. Anyone else? All right. If anyone has any questions, find me after. I'm happy to answer your questions, and thank you for the few of you that have been here today. We're excited to get this thing moving. So, okay, with that, I am going to move us to the next item on our agenda, which is just a reminder about the Battle of the Badges softball game. That game is this Sunday. The weather's gonna be good. It might be a little hot, but please, just as a reminder, if you all are in the community, or for you all sitting here, we'll be having a Battle of the Badges softball game on Sunday at 12:00 PM at Riverside Park. Food, treats, different activities for kids and families. We will be having some activities between the innings as well for people to participate in and receive kind of like t-shirts. This entire project has been supported by donations through our wonderful business community, so we're excited to see them square off. The losing chief is getting dunked in the dunk tank. So we also will have some of our members of our council have graciously volunteered to sit in the dunk tank, so thank you for that. The chief's daughter is going to be singing the National Anthem, so it should just be a really wonderful afternoon. And with all we have to contemplate, I'm just grateful that we have an opportunity to really come together and enjoy ourselves, and enjoy a good softball game with our police department and fire department. So Sunday, 12:00 PM, we hope to see you there, and we hope you can participate. Any questions for anyone on that? We still do need a couple volunteers for the mascot races and the inflatable races.
I volunteer.
I know you did, thank you. I'm just shaming the other side of the room. No, in all fairness, I hope you all can come. Someone asked me if I was going to the dunk tank, and I said, "Well, I'm running, I'm helping to run the event, so push really comes to shove." But I know we have some people who will step up, but in all honesty, even if you can't, just come. I think it'll be great. Okay. Next item then is the Fire Department Monthly Report for July. Any questions on that one? All right. Next then is some committee appointments for your consideration. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Board. Was that you, Mr. Smith? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion on those? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next is our accounts payable. Any questions for Mr. Stevens? It's a hefty packet this time. All right, very good. Then let's move to miscellaneous business. You have the payroll summary from July 24th to August 6th, and cash investments ending July 31st. Questions on either of those items? All right. Let's move to ordinances then. The first is Ordinance 2417. This is to adopt amendments to the 2019 City of Watertown Comprehensive Plan for 1310 Alworth Street. This is from me and the Planning Commission on the second reading.
I move to approve Ordinance 2417.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, second by Mr. Barts. Comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, as I get started here, I just wanted to take a minute to thank all the business leaders for, over the past weeks and months, for emails, texts, and comments. I wanted to say a special thanks to Dodge County Commissioner Dave Froling, who spoke in favor of the rezoning at our last meeting. And then I wanted to thank the citizens and residents. I believe your comments have made a difference. We've seen a number of revisions to the original plan. For me, this actually came down to a question of, does Watertown grow economically, or do we send it growth elsewhere? If you get online, you can look up Dodge County, housing developments in Dodge County, and you'll find that there are developments in Beaver Dam, Lowell, Horicon, Wapon, and Randolph. In Jefferson County, similar type of inquiry, you find Johnson Creek, Fort Atkinson, Lake Mills. I wasn't gonna, not gonna mention the city to the east of us. But when I looked at this question, I had to choose Watertown. So I'm in favor of the rezoning, and I think there are just too many positives here to turn the developer away.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I want to take a few minutes, actually, to look at the zoning map. As we've had lots of different meetings with lots of good participation over the last many months, one of the things I keep hearing is a difference in density. So we've had people who are real estate agents or have been involved with development for 30-plus years, residents, asking this question about density. And understandably, the answer they're getting is, well, if this is zoned multifamily 10, then the developers could have up to 200 units, and they're going to have far less than that, so the density is just fine. It wasn't until I took a look at the zoning map for the entire city of Watertown, that I started to realize that I think possibly that we've been talking past each other a little bit. And so, Mayor, I don't know if you can switch over to that. I want to take a minute, really just kind of look that over, and doing so was very, very helpful for me, and maybe it will be helpful for you as well. So where we're starting here in the city is in the northeast corner. In that dark brown kind of piece of pie area is the Watertown Park Apartments on Fourth Street. And it's dark brown because on the zoning map, dark brown like this is MR10. So you can see that the Watertown Park Apartments are zoned MR10, and they are across the street, across a busy street, north forth, from the Grandview Heights subdivision to the south. And then to the west, there's a street dividing them from a residential area. That kind of greenish-yellow color is two-family residential. And then to the south, you see a whole bunch of yellow, and that color on the zoning map is single-family. So let's go down to the property in question here, and it's this area right here is the 1310 Alworth, and it is 20 acres. And you will notice that not only is that Alworth Street currently zoned as single-family in that yellow color, but in addition to that, all surrounding it then, currently, we have single-family residential as far as adjacent properties. Those are the properties that border that Alworth Street property. So again, that's 20 acres. What I want to do now is go south down to Bowton Street, so let me zoom out a little bit. And if we go down to the Watertown Park East Apartments, whoopsie, you'll see them down here. And it's this dark brown again, because it's MR10 property. And actually, the Watertown East Apartments are three individual parcels, and if you add those three individual parcels of MR10 up, then you get a total acreage of 16 acres. So I want you to compare that Watertown East Apartments of 16 acres to the proposed rezoning up here of the Alworth Street property of 20 acres. And you'll notice that it's significantly larger. So the first thing I want you to keep in mind as we go through this exercise is that if this property on Alworth Street is rezoned to MR10, it will be the largest single parcel of MR10 in the city of Watertown. So keep that in mind. And the second thing I want you to keep in mind is that, apart from some minor exceptions, which I'm gonna talk about, you are not going to find an MR10-zoned property, especially an apartment complex, in the city of Watertown that is adjacent to or sharing a border with single-family residential. Okay? Those are the two things I want you to keep in mind. So let's go back down to the Watertown East Apartments, and you'll say, "Aha, I see a yellow square there." Well, that is true. That yellow square at the northern part of the apartment complex is an existing house that was built in 1960s, and then the Watertown East Apartments built up around it in the 1970s or so. To the east there, you'll see a strip of single-family, but that property is currently empty, and I believe it's owned by the city of Watertown. If we go down a little bit farther here to Good Shepherd and East Main Street, you're gonna see this dark brown MR10 property. And directly to the west, there's single-family, right? Except, no, what is that? That's a cemetery right there. So that apartment complex zoned MR10 is not sharing the boundary or adjacent to any single-family residential homes right there. If we continue to go a little bit to the west, we'll find these apartments right here in the middle, and those apartments are directly across from Doctor's Court and the junior high. And north and south, you're gonna see that yellow, single-family color. Except, north, there are no houses at all, that's undeveloped, and then south, it's a church. So again, we've got an apartment there that is not sharing the boundary or adjacent to any single-family homes or properties. Now, as I said, there are a few minor exceptions, and you can see some little brown specks here. Those are apartment buildings. Actually, they are single apartment buildings, and they are quite old, and they do share a property border with a single-family home. However, I think that if you drove past there, you would say, and if you were to observe, you'd say, "Well, that should be probably more of the exception than the rule." Apart from these things, there are no other exceptions. And so what I want to do really quickly is go on up, and hopefully, the website stays with me here, and I want to find Fox Creek Apartments by the high school. This one's really interesting to me, and I might zoom in just a smidgen and see what happens. So you'll notice that this has that dark brown MR10 color on the western side, but on the eastern side, we've got this lighter tan, and that's actually MR8, which is eight units then per acre. So this whole apartment complex actually has two different zonings. Again, you're not gonna find any single-family residential houses adjoining the border there or adjacent to that property. Let's go down to West Main Street now. And right here, you guys know where we are, right? We're across from Old Deeks there. And this is interesting because you've got that lighter tan, which is the MR8, and then that all surrounds then the MR10. No single-family residential houses in this area. So that MR10 is not sharing the border anywhere with a single-family residential home. Let's go down, and I don't want to lose this, and let me see if I can find Clark Street. This one is really interesting to me. This one kind of seems to show some really thought, and I don't know, maybe some of you in here know what year this is for Clark Street. So there it is, in the middle of the screen. So to the western portion here, you've got this greenish-yellow color, so that's that two-family residential. It then merges into the MR8, which is that light brown, and then that MR8 surrounds the MR10. There are no single-family residential homes bordering or adjacent to that MR10 property. The last one I want to hit on then is down here, and we've got the Audubon. So the Audubon is this area right here. We've got the two single portions, and then this is part of it as well. Though, it actually is three parcels, and when you add the three parcels together, you get 22 acres, just two acres more than that Alworth Street apartment would be, or that Alworth Street development would be. So what I want to show you through this little exercise is that this is actually a, very much, a departure from the zoning that we have previously done in the city of Watertown, and it's a significant departure. Because what we're going to do, if we rezone this to MR10, is for the first time, we are actually going to plan an apartment complex and have that apartment complex be adjacent to and share the border with single-family existing homes. So this is something I think we really need to be careful with. What I kind of picked up on is, in some of these complexes, there was some thought about the zoning density, where you got from one density to the next density and to more dense, which is, I think, what many of our residents are trying to speak to. So there would be some who say, "Well, okay, but this developer is building into their plan a density buffer." But listen, when we're doing the zoning, we have to think about good zoning practices, regardless of that developer, because we all know that it's a very steep climb for them to get all the way through this, get the financing, all the things that they need to do to get Phases 1, 2, and 3 built. We have to set this up as city planners in a strategic way so that we build into the zoning there a buffer for those residents, like we have done historically in the city of Watertown. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I too have a map.
You can steal the plug from her if you want.
Is that how it works?
I can flip. Just let me know. I'd kindly request... I'd kindly request that no one on this side of the room wants to project, or you're going to have to hightail it this way. I can only, let me know when you want me to hit the button.
Go ahead.
Okay. I did request a longer HDMI cord today. No joke.
All right.
But I don't have one for all the way over there.
So this is essentially what's been dancing around my head here. If you take the existing Google Maps area here and superimpose the latest addition that goes on here, which basically has the apartment buildings down here, detention ponds to the north, green space somewhere here, hope you can see my mouse moving, green space here, and then a line of higher-density housing here. If I kind of superimpose colors, and I apologize, these aren't the official zoning ones, this is where I kind of see things and why I'm comfortable with the buffer that's been built into the plans over the past couple of iterations. So generally, like the yellow section over to the right side, let's say that's single-family. With the mention, of course, we have multifamily, purple, I'll put it in brown next time. And then a buffer that's created essentially by some green space, whether that's the detention ponds to the north, whether that is the green space that's built into the plan, and then the housing that's built here, that is somewhere between duplex and single-family, single-family condos, thank you, that was the term I was looking for. In terms of what's being proposed, this is why I'm comfortable with the buffer that was proposed over a couple of different iterations, is that we do have that housing buffer, we have the property broken up. And to me, it looks like the multifamily goes with the multifamily in the lower left-hand corner. So with regard to, are we putting the right zoning in? Everything that I've heard so far from our city experts is that this is what's necessary to get that whole plan through. But I do want to definitely say that I'm sensitive to making sure that there's a buffer in this thing, and I think the plan provides a housing buffer, which is not multifamily. So just wanted to show you what's kind of rattling through my head.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. I'll start off with a correction I have to make about a comment I made last time in regards to what I understood to be the length of time the property had been on the market and the length of time the school board had sold it as. I had misspoke in my timeline, so I was under the impression it had been on the market different than what reality is, and I had individuals from the community and the business community correct me this past week, and so I want to make that correction because I was wrong and misspoke. With the amount of comments I've received this week from business owners and residents, I now have more questions than answers related specifically to this issue. I am disappointed in some of the questions I put RFIs forward to or request for information to members of city staff and received no answer back from. So out of respect to the constituencies that are here, all the business owners that I've received comment from, very lengthy phone calls, very lengthy emails, detailed reports in regards to the potential, I mean, use potential, the potential overvaluation of the property when it was sold, how that process worked, because if you pay more for a property, your profit margins are narrower, which means you need more assistance potentially to make a profit as a developer. And I understand profits are tight, and that's an issue. So that said, out of respect to the recommendation from the general public, I'm going to motion to table till we can have the proper discussion from the community to get their input and to answer the questions that they want at the next meeting in September.
Is there a second for a motion to table?
Yes.
We have a motion, a second, that is not debatable, and we need the majority. Megan.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Wetzel.
Hi.
Mildenhauer.
Hi.
Davis.
No.
Lampy.
No.
Board.
No.
Barts.
No.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails four to five.
Okay. We're back to discussion.
So I'll just finish my discussion. So based on the feedback from the community I've gotten in this, I would be voting no on this amendment and the next one.
Mr. Blankey.
So there's a few things on this that I do have some concerns on. Obviously, the density is the biggest. I'm not going to go over everything. Alder Davis did a very good job of laying that out. Several of the comments we've received, we talk about the greater good, and I know it was discussed two weeks ago. But at what point does greater good outweigh the citizens and the residents of a certain area of the community? You have to take into account those people, and they have come out in force. They came to the public hearings, they've come to the council meetings, they've come to the plan commission meetings and spoken about their concerns. Let me take another piece of farmland that we have in town. It's right behind Brant Quirk Park. If somebody came into town and said, "Hey, we want to build a distribution center there. We're going to be paying people $30 an hour, and they're going to be great jobs, it's going to be 400 new jobs in town, and we want to build it there because of the access point to the highway." Everyone would say you're out of your mind to do that, wouldn't you? Because you have a school there, you have a park there, you have plenty of other things there. You take that into consideration, not to mention the residents of that neighborhood. There are adjacent neighborhoods to that. You wouldn't make a project like that. You have to consider the people who it's going to have a direct impact on. The greater good, that's when democracy becomes tyranny, when the greater good does what they want and tramples on the people that are directly impacted by it. So I wanted to address that aspect. And then the other one was, there was a lot of talk about how long this piece of land was on the market and the price that was paid for it. And the only developer that came forward to do a development here, if you're selling something and you go a year or two years with no one interested at your purchase point, wouldn't you logically lower your price? I mean, if you priced your home at $800,000 and you have zero people walk through it, your Realtor is doing you a disservice. If they don't say, "Hey, you might want to consider lowering your price a little bit to get some foot traffic through this home." But apparently, that never happened here. So it sat on the market for a long time, and they, because of that, rather than casting a wide net, the price point of the property cast a very narrow net. I appreciate everything that this developer has done and has gone through. They've done what they could to get to the point to try to appease the neighborhood. However, I just don't think it's enough at this time. Thank you.
Others? Yep.
I would go along with Alder Person. Blankey just said, "The greater good." The school system wanted to sell that land, and we're, but, and I will not vote for that just so they can unload that land and make a profit. That's what it amounts to.
Anyone else who would like to comment?
First of all, I want to thank again the numerous people that have come and contributed to the discussion, especially the citizenry at the public hearing, at both of the readings of the ordinance on two successive meetings, the numerous communications individually by email and phone calls, and the effort to bring to our attention the kinds of things that will help us make the best decision. And whenever you look at the various responsibilities, especially of local government, there's probably nothing more important than our responsibility in areas of land use issues. That includes the comprehensive plan, that includes zoning, because it is the very essence of the relationship between government and the citizenry. Now, during the discussion earlier, the public comments earlier tonight, I thought it was tremendously insightful, the terminology used by Lori Hoffman when she was describing what would occur if this comp plan change and the rezoning were to move forward. And she said it would be breaking the social contract. And I started thinking to myself, what exactly does that mean, and how does it relate to the citizenship and the government on a local land use issue? Well, the notion of the social contract goes back to the Enlightenment. It goes back to a philosophical discussion about the relationship between those who are governed and those who govern. And what is the very essence of the social contract? It is fundamental fairness. And the way that fairness manifests itself in the relationship at a local government level on a land use topic is, local government makes commitment and the citizenry invests their trust. Therein is the linkage that forms the social contract. What breaks the social contract? When the commitment by the government violates the trust placed in the government by the people. And that is what is at work here. I'm not going to spend a lot more time talking about the issues underlying what should be of paramount importance, but I will simply say, we are looking at a mammoth change in the issue of commitment and trust. We are talking about a huge amount of acreage constituting a neighborhood called a subdivision that is 100% single-family development. And the notion is, regardless what the motivation behind it is, that that can be appropriately replaced by ultra-dense, multifamily housing. That is the reason why it struck certain people in our community as a violation, a breaking of the social contract. What needs to happen in this instance is that, number one, we need to defeat the modification of the comp plan. We need to defeat the next ordinance dealing with the issue of zoning. And we need to allow the development of this 20-acre parcel to return to what it was envisioned to be from the start. And what that was is a beautiful, cohesive, single-family neighborhood that is more than just boundaries and investment. It is a neighborhood in which people invest their entire life and establish relationships within the confines and the reliance upon the city's commitment. Now, if this were allowed to occur, this 20-acre parcel would result in something in the neighborhood of 50 single-family homes. Now, looking at the development that has already occurred in the Grandview Heights subdivision, looking at the value that is constituted by each and every one of those single-family homes, it's not stretching the imagination to assume that the average value of these 50 homes that could be built there would be in the $300-plus-thousand range. Now, that's $15 million of tax valuation, and it would be immediate tax benefit. When a new home is built, it immediately goes on the tax roll unless the government has become involved and promotes another type of development underwritten by another financial approach called a TIF district. Now, what I will tell you is this, we've heard a lot about returning this 20 acres to the tax rolls, et cetera, et cetera. There are appropriate locations for TIF districts, and there are financial arguments that can be made in appropriate locations for appropriate purposes that make it a wise choice. But to defer for 20-plus years any direct taxpayer benefit within the scope of a TIF district, and admittedly, they can be retired early, and there are lots of variables, but the direct taxpayer benefit will not come from the plan that is being proposed here. Single-family development, no subsidies whatsoever, instantaneous taxpayer benefit. So unlike the TID district approach, this is exactly the opposite of the highest and best use of this parcel. It should remain single-family. To change it would be a financial mistake. It would evidence an effort to attain some kind of short-term benefit, but it would be unwise because it would undermine the very essence of good government, which is the capacity for the government to serve the people. And that the trust established by the government and the commitment is what allows people to move forward with this social contract, dependent and relying upon the goodwill of the other to the benefit of the greater good. Therein lies the greater good. Honor and maintaining commitment, that underwrites the greater good.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know we're getting off track, you're talking about TIF and TID. But there is a benefit to the city. Could I ask Mr. Stevens about that? It's not like there's 20 years of nothing.
I want to be mindful, yeah, you're right, we're not talking about TIDS tonight. We're talking, same thing as I said to Ms. Davis last week, we're just talking about comp plans and rezones. If you're interested in knowing that nuance, because you're not incorrect, there is a benefit. Mr. Stevens can fill you in after. I want to be mindful of what's on our agenda tonight.
Sure, I understand.
Any other comments?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I am not as eloquent as Alder Smith or verbose, which is good, maybe. I'm not as organized as thorough as Alder Davis either. I have been on jumping back and forth over this fence for the last weeks, pondering which way is right and what... way is right and what to do. Everyone I've talked to agrees Watertown needs housing. We all know that, understand, that's a given. Everyone I've talked to on both sides have been very cordial, very complimentary, there's been no anger, animosity, everyone's been very understanding about everything. Yesterday, I was in the backyard of two gentlemen whose houses about that property, right across from the proposed condos, and gave me a different perspective in a way of that. Need to keep my thoughts together, my mind, they kind of run together, then they run away. And it happens here as well. This property's been for sale for a short time. Some of it's had six years, kind of unofficially. Which is, someone said to me, it's kind of like saying, I have a piano for sale, it's in my basement, and I tell Alder Schmidt. Then after four years, I put it online, so here's a piano. It's not been out there that long. Today's economy, we're all scared about that. Inflation, what's going to happen in the next three months, two and a half months? It seems like a very difficult, challenging time to change what is right now. And there's a question, as Alder Smith said, about the people. There's approximately 18 houses that would be directly in front of the condos proposed. There's some in the far west end of Meadow Brook area that would not be touched, as Alder Lampy's diagram showed, they won't be touched by the property. But there's 18 houses, 18 people, 18 family units. And as two people told me who live out there who do not want this to go, and they said, we understand, at different times, different conversations, we understand that the city cannot be swayed or not be driven by the hopes and dreams of 18 households. Which is true. And my brain says, that is true. But then I think about what Alder Smith said about trust of a city, I went so far to think of an oligarchy, a country run by a handful of people. One person told me, you know, I've been here long enough to know that, after a few years, this will all be done, and we'll go on and have apartments in our backyard, we won't think about it. But in my simple mind, I think we need to not almost in a way stepping on people of the city. has some other things scribbled on there, but I will wait. I would give it time to see if someone buys this property. We can't afford it with no subsidy, no other reason, just because they want to build houses. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Megan.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
No.
Smith.
No.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
No.
Mildenhauer.
No.
Davis.
No.
Motion failed, three to six.
Okay. Next is ordinance 24-18. This is to amend Chapter 550 of our official zoning map, to rezon 1310 Allworth Street from SR4 to MR10. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on the second reading. Yes.
I would so move 24-18.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barts. Megan.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
No.
Smith.
No.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
No.
Mildenhauer.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Oh, boy. I thought we were on a different one, and my apologies. I apologize.
She voted no.
That was very unprofessional, I apologize.
Motion failed, three to six.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-19. This is to amend the Plan Unit Development and General Development Plan under Section 550-152 for CB, HI, and K of the Balinski-Hunter Oaks Development. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on its second reading. Yes.
For the adoption of proposed ordinance 24-19.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Wetzel. Comments or questions? Megan.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9639. This is a resolution to update our payroll resolution to address the pay grades for the wastewater division laboratory manager from grade M to, excuse me, grade J to M. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve 9639.
Motion by Mr. Barts, second by Mr. Board. Comments or questions? Yes.
I just have one request moving forward. Anytime these come up, can we get the base pay amount and what it's moving to, so we have a reference? I know it's on the public website, but...
We've sent you the paid table, but we can send that again.
I meant, I have it, yes, but I meant included in the packet, so it's, so public can have it without having to dig through the files.
Sure, we can include the paid table. Sure. That will change annually, but sure. Any other comments or questions? Megan.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Very good. Next is Exhibit 9640. This is a resolution to update the payroll resolution to add the civil staff engineer position, again from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Lampy, not adding a job. This is where we decided we were going to advertise for both an assistant city engineer and a civil engineer, got someone at civil, and just need to get them on, we don't actually have that position in this table you just asked about. So it's not a new job, it's actually a cheaper job.
Okay. Because I was going to ask.
I know, I saw the eye contact coming, so I figured I'd answer it for you right away. Anybody else on this one? Megan.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
No.
Mildenhauer.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
No.
Smith.
No.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
No.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Very good. Next is Exhibit 9641. This is a resolution to approve the Wistat Urban Area Boundary Map. This is here from me and the Plan Commission.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Wetzel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blanke.
Just a little context.
You want to provide some for us?
So this map is a planning document required by the DOT and the Federal Highway Association, and is tied to different buckets of funding. Streets and roadways within that urban area boundary are eligible for STP urban funding, which we apply for grants on. Streets outside of the urban area boundary are eligible for STP rural funding, which townships would apply for funding on. So it's a planning document tied to funding.
Required by Wistat.
Correct.
And what's inside of this magic box is city limits, or no?
No, it includes the city limits, but it's driven by census data. It's kind of just a boundary of areas we may grow in the next 10 years.
So the townships or the villages that have stakeholders in that area could then use the city funding for improvements that they wanted to then, potentially? Hypothetically?
Ish.
Yeah.
Ish is a probably, this doesn't prohibit, let's, any of the towns surrounding us from accessing pots of money. It more so allows us, I'm looking at you, so stop me, in my mind, it more so allows us to best apply for money among us and them to ensure that a road has a better chance of receiving funding, if it's not within our city limits. The one that we asked about in specific was Juno Street, right? And DOT said, nope, keep it in, if you can apply for it, and they can apply for it, the chances are better than one of you just being able to apply for it. Doesn't do anything process-wise, except open up pots of money available at the state, like, it's not a planning map for any other purpose, correct?
That's right.
Any other questions or comments? Megan.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Next is Exhibit 9642. This is a resolution to award the Bike and Ped Network Master Plan to HKGI for $99,700 and to enter into three-year party agreement. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Barts. Comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Just a little clarity, this is nearly $100,000 for a plan, correct?
Andrew, please, yeah, I'm going to have Andrew.
The, and it looks as though we have a grant where the city's portion's only 20,000 of that.
Correct, yes.
This goes back to one of the comments I've made in a past meeting, where these firms that are consultants for municipal government, I think, charge an exorbitant fee for these services.
Would you like Andrew to share a little bit about the scope of work, or are you solid? I thought you were going to ask the grant question, but then you answered it yourself.
No, I'm solid on that.
Okay, sorry, I was going to have you talk about the grant. So yeah, maybe stay, maybe stay close, okay.
It's more my general complaint on the fees that these companies are charging municipalities and how they are getting to be completely ridiculous.
Understood. Yes, sir.
I guess the question I'd like to ask city engineers, I mean, is this type of study generally regarded as a precursor for other types of actually doing the paving and construction grant?
It is. We would be far more competitive having a bike and pedestrian network master plan on file that we would reference in future grant applications.
Yes.
I see the location of the company's out of Minnesota, given the fact that other municipalities within the state have their own bike and pedestrian faster planes and very robust programs, did we not get anybody from the state who bid on this? Or was it just not that competitive?
We use a program for professional services called qualification-based selection. We solicit what's called an RFP, or Request for Proposals, to a number of firms, there were over 100 firms that we solicited in our RFP. We got two responses, one was from a planner, a planning firm in Wisconsin that we worked with before. This was a new firm, we haven't worked with them, but what we do when we get proposals is we rank them based on qualifications, the people on the team, their past experience, and it was unanimous among our review panel that this company out of, they're based in Minneapolis, but they have a satellite office kind of near La Crosse. They ranked highest among our panel.
I'm assuming, because I wasn't part of that process, their portfolio in their packet showed case study after case study after case study of all the works that they've done in the past, whether it's Wisconsin or Minnesota, wherever, to show the effectiveness, and it's not just a newer thing?
Yeah, they, they had an impressive portfolio that would fit Watertown very well.
Other questions for Andrew? Or anyone? All right, Megan, thanks, Andrew.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blanke.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Very good. Next is Exhibit 9643. This is a resolution to apply and accept the Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Grant. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, second by Mr. Mildenhauer. Questions or comments? Christine is on remotely, in case there are... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the Exhibit 9644. This is the resolution for the Urban Forestry Grant, here from me and the Finance Committee. Motion by Mr. Mildenhauer, second by Ms. Davis. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are now at the point in our agenda for comments from citizens present. Go ahead, sir. You still got to come up, though. Yeah.
Mike Houghton, you're at 1302 Newcastle Court. I just want to thank all you for the time you spent on this. I know it's been way more than I thought it would, but each of you dug into it and came up with a solution that you thought was best for the city, so I do appreciate this time. I understand how much it takes, not only the alders, but also the city staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Emma Anderson, 1301 Allworth Street. I wanted to say thank you, and I, as a citizen that has benefited many times over from the work that you all do, as a gardener in the community garden and having the privilege to do that, I appreciate that you continue to do the work that you do and that you put this kind of time and effort into it.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to comment? Anyone remotely? All right, with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Mildenhauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.